Okay, the recording is going again. We're done speaking about.
We're done speaking about personnel matters.
Personnel matters, thank you. Okay. Legislative update. Have you guys been following Mark?
Mm-hmm.
And everything? So you guys all got a copy of the... Of this that he sent, they sent out? So, the main one... I mean, we already have an A and P tax in place, so we should be fine, and we already have it as the maximum state allowance. But this really does hinder other cities that do not have an A and P tax. So, I have written my support... Or written to our senators and told them that we do... I do not support that. Um, the home-based business and licensing bill. Um, you know, we really don't have anything in our city right now regarding that, so it's kind of mute for us, but I will stand behind whatever municipal way supports, you know, for being a good bill. The eminent domain, Senate Bill 335. Um, it could have a negative impact on them. Um, so, that right now, it asks cities to prove a negative. Um, and I really haven't dug into that one a lot, have you, Robert? Um, but I will, I have it on my radar to dig into. And the other three were FOIA bills that were through the senate. Um, all of them, one of them, they're not taking... They're taking a neutral position on, and that was SC 194. And that's basically that someone can take a picture of a document that we have on their cellphone, which is fine with me. It saves Rosie having to copy something. So, I'm neutral on that, too. Um, SC 196, um, that's the litigation cost in the FOIA. That could be an issue for us, for AJ. And SC 208, the term of a meeting. Um, so the... They want to include all meetings, formal and former, special or regular, of two or more members of the governing body are public meetings. So, um, they encourage us to think about this one and share our thoughts. So, them are kind of the ones that have been highlighted by the municipal way. Um, any thoughts?
The only thing on my mind to think is that FOIA, and I believe strongly that FOIA should apply when the legislative body is in session.
Right.
And if it's not the legislative body, in other words, the quorum of the legislative body...
Right.
Doesn't require, should not require FOIA.
Right.
Because it would prevent me from having a conversation with...
Me.
Out in Rotary.
Right.
You know?
Or Doyle.
That's no, we don't want to have.
Right.
Too small a community. We see these people all the time. So, it is the legislative body that, you know, meets, and that's public meeting, perfect.
Right.
Like this is.
It almost seems to me, to back up a rather thing, it almost affinges on my personal right to converse, generally speaking, with Doyle at the grocery store, you know? But I understand, you know, that that's basically very candid.
And I've taken record.
We can all thank Fort Smith for this.
Yes.
How do we get back at Fort Smith?
So, um...
There's a way.
Yeah. So, you know, there was a big thing on Facebook about the task force meeting. You know, that it needed to be public, it needed to be recorded, it needed global. Well, you know, Paul has always said, and I did check with AJ, if it's the mayor and one city council person, we're fine. It's just the mayor and two city council persons that we're in trouble. So, I have not advertised the task force meeting. I, you know, I'm sure Mr...
What?
Light will have it on Facebook for me anyway, so, anyway.
Um, you know, I also, and I think there's the caveat that you, as the mayor, can't have a serial meeting. That is, you can't meet with Robert, and then with, you know, Sharon, or whoever it is, and then somebody else, and then somebody else, and then somebody else to say, "This is what we discussed." Can't do that.
Right, right.
No.
Right.
But I think we all understand that. It's just that I want to make sure this is on this.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I would agree with that.
Yeah. Okay. So, the mayor's update. So, AJ and I both seen this article in the paper for the electrical cars.
Yeah.
Um, so I have sent an email to this adopt a charter, and they're installing 10 locations, they're installing across the state, um, with the help of a $160,000 grant. Um, and it's through Energy Corp, Environmental Initiatives. And I put on my email that we would be the perfect place to have one because we get people from all over the state of Arkansas and all over the United States. So, I'm thinking that a perfect place for it is in our community parking lot out there. So, I'm trying to get us one of these free stations and find out what we have to do to get some of that free station money. Um, code enforcement. This has kind of been an issue with me since I've been there. There's just no way we don't have good documentation for code enforcement. So, low and behold, when we was off this last week, I got this email from this company that just sold North Little Rock all this code enforcement software. And it, you get an iPad, and it keeps you code enforcement. They can do all of their work when they're out in the field. So, everything's on his iPad that he can do all of his work. Like, if he gave him a citation, or a 30-day or 15-day warning, it, that program will come up in 15 days and tell him he needs to go look at that issue again. Which, there, I'm, there's just, that's not happening. So, so anyway, I am going to look into the cost of it. I think it would be a good cost. If it's not too expensive, I think it would be money well spent. Um, I haven't had a chance to talk to Dallas, because she's been out again. But I just think that would be money well spent by our city to have a program for code enforcement. Um, not only for us, but also for PR reasons. Um, the company that, that grocery and stuff I read from this company, one of the reasons North Little Rock Senate was for PR reasons. Because now they've seen their code enforcement person out there doing it right there, and a lot of times the people are coming out of the house and engaging the code enforcement lines, which is just good PR. So, if it's not really expensive, you probably will see me come forth to ask for spending, or expenditure on that.
I have an idea.
As long as it meets what I feel it needs to meet, you know?
Can I ask one question? So, I'm not, I don't remember why, I just, and I don't, I'm not criticizing anyone, but I heard this, the previous mayor, you know, came back with something from the League of Cities about, I'll just go call it, see something, say something, which is, you can take a picture of whatever it was, the grocery utilities, the mayor, whatever. I was just like, okay, and I can't remember, I want to say with like four grand, five grand, or whatever it was, it wasn't that expensive.
She clicked this.
Okay, but the end, at the end result was, no one used it?
No one used it.
No one used it.
And see, this is more oriented to code enforcement.
Just him alone, just the...
Yes. Right. So, he gets a phone call from someone, he can have his iPad right there, he can make notes on it of what, what's done, what's done it, and then he can press a button that says reminder, and in 15 days, if he needs to go back and check it, it will print up on his reminder.
Yeah, and in my mind, that's not really the issue. The issue really is the supervisor.
That's one of the questions, yeah. Is that something that I can put my eyes on?
Yep.
So, because otherwise, it's, it does no good if you're, if I can't put my eyes on it. So, um...
With my iPad, you can put a, one of those, what do you call those, memory device?
Right.
Under...
Stuff got put in there, and it'll, you're completing as well as anybody else.
So, so...
Say again?
Need a system that feeds it automatically.
Oh, yeah, that would, that would be good.
We don't need, we don't need to be pumping.
No, no. I want it, I want my computer hooked up to it so that I know when and if follow-up's being done. Um, so I've been working on the website update. I'm not sure you all are aware of our website, but we are married with the resort. So, anything that I have to do on our website or want done, like, I've, since I've been mayor, I've put the slides out there the next day, and I've put the sign minutes out there the next day. I have to forward them to David Russell, who has to download them to our portion of the Visit Fairfield Bay website. So, I have asked him if he will take us off of that website. And, okay, and put a link. So, we would have our own individual website, but there would be a link to go to the Visit Fairfield Bay site, and Fairfield Bay site would, Visit Fairfield Bay site would have a link to go to ours. And that way, we can put whatever we want out there. Um, Dallas has brought forth a few things that he'd like on there. He'd like our zoning maps on there. Um, I can think of several things that need to be on there. Now, the fact that we don't accept credit cards here and stuff, some of these people having the application out there, they can at least fill it, download it, print it, and fill it out, and bring it in, you know? So, a lot of places have gone to where they can take the work permission stuff online. But I don't know that we really need to go there with that. Um, but I would like it available so they can print it off, and have it filled out, and bring it in, and have it ready. Um, so, I've been working really hard on trying to get it organized. Um, I'm hoping to have my part of it done by April first. And then David will have to go in and get his part done. Now, I am paying him a monthly fee of $200 a month to be our IT person. Um, because I was not comfortable with the fact that if David Russell ever gets fired, for whatever reason, we have no IT. And since he's been doing the resort IT, I did have him sign a contract. It's, it's, it's a contract, it's not, he's not an employee, but at least he would have knowledge of what was there and how to help us reorganize.
That's actually is a contract.
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and it's $200 a month, and I'm just real concerned if the firm would take a drastic change in what they have now. We're left out in the cold. So, I wanted him on contract to at least be there to help us get back to what we need done.
Is it, it's signed, though?
Yeah. So, it was signed, and it just says that, you know, he'll take care of our computer system, the 911 computers over there, which, the, um, fireplace rescue, the senior center. At least, if something were to happen, that they choose to get rid of him, we have someone that will come in and get us up and going. At that point in time, if that ever happens, or we need to look at that, then we probably need to look at going with IT in a box, which is what the municipal way pushes. Um, and it, they'd be nothing but municipal way website.
How much is IT in a box?
Um...
I, I don't, it depends on the size of your city, right?
It depends on the size of your city.
But I never got a sense in all the presentations I sent to them, Ben involved in. I've never gotten a sense of what it was costing.
I kept the flyer.
Just off the top of your head.
Oh, I don't remember off the top of my head.
It's less than, it's less than $5,000 a year.
It was, I think it was $500, $600 a month, that they charge you monthly for. And then if they do extra stuff, of course, there's extra fees. So, um, but if we ever get in that position, David Russell at least would be there to help us get the conversion going. So, he is getting $200 a month right now, just even though I just, I had to do something. But that was, that is a big concern to me. Um...
I like good vote.
So... Um, so once the website is up and, and running, all that you guys know. Um, you guys have anything? So? Robert?
We've, just one thing to talk about. They took down a few signs on Long Street.
Right.
But they didn't take one down on Maddox. It says local ATVs only, and to me, that means if I lived on a road, local. But it doesn't mean the guys that come in, they still can go to Bogey.
They come out of that green trail, or they come out of that trail and go down, "Where is the sign on Maddox?"
It's right by the green trail. It's about 10 feet from the street.
If they come out of the green trail and want to go to Bogey, they...
It says local TV, I mean local ATVs only.
And that, that sign might be hard to get down because there was a lot of, of not happy people when that sign came down. I got two emails from people that, in the mountain ranch area, that were not happy that this sign came down.
Well, not our... And then you can get a lot of them, but the thing is about it, that what we were striving to do for Bogey...
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, I did it.
It's gone.
Yeah.
It comes to that one sign.
Yeah. So, uh, that, that's, you know...
Well...
No, I, I, I was, I, I mean, David had Tom pull the other sign.
Well, he was supposed to pull that one, too, because when David called me, he was very upset about it, that that was done, the guy did it on his own.
Right, right.
If they didn't have anything to do with it, and I mentioned that sign, he was let on to be there, that's what it says.
Right.
And, of course, and he told me, Tom told me, that that was, that he can go locally.
Right.
But if I read a sign that said local TV's only, like, people that live in that area, you go out of nowhere. Anyhow...
So, it's on Mountain Ranch Drive?
Pardon?
It's on Mountain Ranch Drive.
Maddox. On Maddox. Maddox, and I went to see if it was the green trail, though, left at the corner.
Yeah. Looked on the other side of the green trail.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I will, um...
And I haven't seen ATV in my neighborhood, pretty much, I guess.
Okay. Robert, do you have anything?
I don't. Has Dallas said anything to you about, I know it's been off, about anybody making any moves to redo or help possible trailer if you condemn up there? I mean, I assume they're all on schedule.
Uh, the paperwork's sitting in there, we have to wait another 30 days, something?
30 days for publication, or notice, or posting, whatever, whatever it is.
Right. So, Glenn has all the paperwork done, we just can't get it out yet.
Okay. There was, there was one of the five we did in December, there was one within ownership dispute. So, we only get four.
You're right, right.
Okay.
And is there any progress been made on the ownership dispute?
Not that I, not that I know of, no.
So, does that result in the same, hopefully?
So, I think it was, and I don't want to reveal confidential information, but I think the public record shows that it is, it was a land sale contract essentially, so a non-recorded contract, and then it was occupied by the buyer. Buyers gave up, and they were the ones who agreed to do the renovations. They gave up on the purchase, so stopped doing renovations, so they settled out. But now, the land sale contract is still, you know, valid, and so the sellers have gone after the buyers. I think they're not going to pay. I don't know if there's going to be a bankruptcy or what, but you know? Um, so, the sellers are the ones responsible for us because actually the, the land is under, the deed is to the seller. The seller does not transfer deed on, on the record, right? So, yeah, so it's a mess. And look, they, I think that they've acknowledged that they need to clean up and fix it, and they realize there's, there's no hope of getting their money out until the sewers turn back on. There's no hope of that until they pay the club. There's no hope of that until they pay the water. So, I mean, I think they've got those three things in it.
Hopefully, they'll just throw up their hands.
So, from my understanding of that one, that there is economic viability.
Value to it?
Yes, there is. That's why the people who were occupying it thought that they could make a go of it. And they had put in, I want to say they had put in, don't quote me, but I want to say they had put in something between 10 and 18K. So, I, I don't, I have not seen it, I don't know what it looks like. I don't even know where it is.
Yeah, I've seen it, I've, 18...
Is it near, so have they done it, maybe they've done it on the inside? No?
Jeez, I, you know, I've, I've never been in it, but I don't know which one it is.
Dallas got the notice, I mean, when, when the sewers turned off, you know, and they don't do something, then it, then it can't be occupied, and then they're out, then they have to get out of there.
We just have our hands full. One that is being processed and just awaiting things. And so, the isolation, this deep, he's here, the one we're carrying down is here, and the ventilation is deep because he's saving the 2x4s out of it. He's got a truck up, well, that's been there for the last three weeks.
I haven't done that, babe.
That's, you know, that's somewhere along the line.
Yeah.
We need to discuss about how, that maybe some of those should be put out for bid, because I don't know what we're doing.
So, is this...
It's the owner, in this case, go out.
Oh, the owner, okay. The owner's trying to save some of the stuff inside before Dallas takes it away?
They get...
The owner's trying to save some of the things inside before Dallas takes it back?
I don't know where it's coming from, but there's a pickup truck, he's back in, it's just full of 2x4s. What he's going to do with it, I have not discussed it with him. I, I don't, don't want to, not my job. But, you know, the insulation is coming from somewhere in the trailer. It's being, it is condemned, and it's spread out all over the yard. And then on top of it, he's begun, he's the guy that, we had a, the community club came with a tractor and a big truck and put stuff that he put on the ditch in front of his house and all the way, that's the guy. And so, he's now accumulating more black plastic bags out of the ditch.
So, Dallas takes it?
Yeah, I know, I know. But I know it's been sick.
Yeah. Well, he had his MRI today.
Well, I do, I do want to talk about one thing. We do not have a chairman for the planning and zoning commission. And our vice chairman will not be at the next planning and zoning meeting where we have a public hearing. And I'll redo the third time the zoning for the beer shore or the resort is building. So, we're kind of, and we may not have enough people that can vote at this meeting because we've got two people plus an alternate is on the community, is on the resort board as part of the planning and zoning commission, so they have to refuse themselves. So, we, we don't have a forum of four people that can vote without the unity, the resort board people being there. You know, we're going to have to table this and vote at the next meeting.
Yeah. My recollection is, I could be wrong, but my recollection is that, and I'm sorry, I did not have a chance to review this issue, so I didn't know about it until today. My recollection was that, going back six to eight months, no, going back a year and a half, while Jim Stutz was out of town, Paul asked me to draft an ordinance allowing for a complete set, that is, every member of the board had an alternate in the event that that person was away. So, there were, if it's a, I can't remember, it was a five-member board, and there's five alternates? But the number of alternates we used was only three. So, do we have extra alternates that are not, that we have not appointed people? I'm thinking that we, we have alternates available, alternates slots available.
But we don't know if, we don't know if they can be there.
No, that I totally get. Yes, I, I got that, right.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just telling you that we try to see this ahead of time, so my thinking is, and I don't know, but maybe it's a good time for us to think, okay, are there other people that we want to put on there to start developing them and helping them figure out?
Yeah, I didn't bring my board...
Okay, so Ward 1 has Tommy's positions empty. Tom Hager is on there for Ward 1. Ward 2 has Robert Hadley and Bill Fisher, which Bill Fisher's a community club board member. And the at-large is Ernie Campbell, who's our community club board member. Ward 3 has the vice chairman, which is Gene Ferguson, and Ron Norden is Ward 3. And the alternates are Brian Wade and David Manningly.
So, we have more alternates, it sounds like?
So, we have two alternates.
Ward 3 has two ward, or I'm sorry, Ward 3 has two alternates, and Ward 2 has how many alternates?
No, Ward, Ward 2...
There's two alternates.
Yeah, there's only two alternates. So...
I thought Tom Welch was an alternate.
He resigned.
He resigned?
Yeah. He was, he resigned the first of the year.
But he's been at the last two meetings.
I don't know, he resigned. He sent me his resignation.
He's not voting, is he? Please tell me.
No, he's not voting?
Oh, thank God.
He resigned. So, um, so my suggestion to Dallas on this issue was, number one, we cannot go after any more board members. Is that a conflict or cancel it? When you have something come up for the board.
Yeah.
Um, Ward 1, I did have, I cannot think of his name, Robert, he used to be the mayor of the whip. Ralph's his first name.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't know what, yes, he lives in your area. Um, I had given, I got the, I got her phone number from Rosie, and I asked Dallas to contact him to see if he would want to serve our planning and zoning. Um, and then as these positions come up, like, Bill Fisher just renewed his for three years, so his doesn't come up. But as these positions come up, like, Ernie Campbell is going to come up with a member at large. So, you know, if he wants to re, if you guys choose to renew him, that's fine, but we need to get away from community club board members being on planning.
I have a question. And I know this is an extent, but is, is it a requirement that planning and zoning, planning and zoning board members are volunteers?
Um, part of the protection is that the volunteer, the statute gives them certain kinds of immunity. So, I think if we give them some kind of credium or something like that, is what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't know that that would apply. I, I have not taken a look at it. I, I certainly understand where you're coming from, you know? In Little Rock, they're fully paid, so.
Well, the reason I say if there's something we do, because what we get is they're, they don't want to, they don't want to learn anything, they just want to come to this meeting.
Buy, eat, smoke?
Yeah, spill.
Okay. They want to come to this meeting and approve replays and go.
Yeah. They want to tackle the tough stuff.
They don't want to tackle the tough stuff. They want, they don't want to have to study and learn and figure out what's going on and really, do what they need to do. The chairman is overburdened, he's trying to run the meeting, try to get stuff going. If there is something that we can do from a remuneration...
Yeah, yeah.
...basis to help incent them to do more, what can we do with any of that? All of them.
Okay.
No, and I think that's a good point, you know? Um, because they're, they're a very critical part of...
They end up, what they end up, the beginning is done.
Why?
There's no planning.
Why?
I was only, when I first came over here, sort of, you know, and all they did was, you know, bring that.
And, and, right, yeah, it's really critical that we start looking at planning.
Planning is possibly one of the parts of the meeting.
I thought, you don't do anything.
Jim Stutz tried to do a little bit of it, I don't know.
Does he want to come back, or is he, is he fed up?
He has one, he's still taking care of everyone.
Yeah, he's still taking, yeah.
Okay.
She's been Florida for two months now.
So, I, I think that's a great idea, Robert, if we can give them some type of a monthly meeting for them. Um, I think that's a great idea, we'd really like to do that. Um, Robert and I had talked, the municipal league is doing training in April for planning and zoning. And, uh, so, I was going to talk to Dallas about that and tell him that, number one, it's going to be mandatory for him to take it, and number two is we need, I'm going to check, I sent the municipal league an email to see if I can sign up for my planning and zoning commission.
I mean, it's supposed to be on the sixth and...
It'd be a good idea.
Two from each ward, and then actually, originally, it had started out with an alternate from each ward. So, Brian Wade is an alternate for Ward 3, David Manningly is an alternate for your ward. So, Ward 2, right now, does not have an alternate, um, in it. So, um, so, so they're really, yeah, they're really short, they're short of chairman who, who just quit, and then there's Ward 2 really needs an alternate on there because they have the two, uh...
Board members.
Board member calling up.
What happened with the chair, buddy? I didn't know, I didn't know about that.
Uh, he quit because of, uh, just too much work.
Yeah.
Basically, it was too much.
Yeah.
He didn't really run the meeting, he didn't know how to run a meeting. He just did it because nobody else would. And he just, he lost, and he was, you know, relying on Dallas, and then I gave him the picture, and now he just relies on me to call the board, so.
Yeah.
And it's...
So, and, you know, this has been a problem for quite some time. There was just no leadership there. That's why I appointed Robert as a city council liaison, number one, so we can all be, keep our praise upon... Uh, number one, so we can all be, kept apprised of what's going on. And number two, there just needed to be some leadership there of who, of someone that understood the planning and zoning. So, um, I, if, if AJ can find a way that we can give them a perdeem, uh, that would be fine with me, you know. Maybe like twenty-five, fifty dollars a meeting, if you're not at the meeting, you don't get it.
That's right.
You know, uh, something like that, um, and, uh, and move forward, you know, with that, um. A, and for the, you know, for Ward one, I was thinking of Ralph, but I don't know if he would want to do it. Ralph, I don't know what his last name is on the phone, I just know he's, he's an ex-mayor, so he's going to understand planning and zoning, um.
At least we're inventory.
Yeah, yeah, you know, he'll, he'll, he'll have some, um, some idea.
I'll talk to him, then, then he'll do things anyway, he's, he's, he's had enough of it, so, I don't know, he might, he might go for that.
So, so I was hoping, um, the other thing that's never been done, uh, you know, because I'm, I'm not sure why. But, you know, maybe we need to start, when we have an opening on planning and zoning, maybe it needs to be announced at our, on a public meeting, where there's an opening, and if you're interested, to contact the mayor.
Yeah, why not?
Because we have never done that, it's always just been turned over from someone to someone to someone, we've never asked for public participation. And I mean, we can specify wards, there's a position open in Ward one, and there's an alternate position open in Ward two, you know, and if you have questions, contact me. And I mean, I'll be glad to do that at our next, the careful meeting, and, and, and just see if we get any response.
Somebody may hold up their hand, it's, it's, we never had thought about.
Yeah, you know, and we.
They might be really good at it.
Yeah, we could always, you know, at least bring them in, and Robert and I could, since Robert does, is our city council liaison, we could at least talk to them and say, you know, here's what, here's what it entails, here's what you need to do, you know.
I can't remember, there was somebody named Colleen who did it for a month, right?
Colleen.
Yeah, she did for, yeah, she, and she was going to be pretty good at it, but.
Yeah.
She got frustrated with the leadership process and the people, uh, she got frustrated with.
Yeah, they didn't want to.
They didn't understand what their job was.
Yeah, you know, she's out there on the internet doing all the research for the signage thing, and, and they were not receptive to helping her at all, I think, was part of her issue, at least that's what she was trying to make me stop. Okay.
So I thought she moved away too, in Texas, my.
Uh, she, she infected part-time, she's down in Freeman.
We need one.
No water, no heat.
Ward one needs one now, and that's where I was going to ask that Ralph.
An alternate or?
Uh, no, a permanent.
Okay.
Uh, and that term would expire, it would just be for, uh, the rest of this year, because that term expires in December, so, um. But, so if you know someone, or if you see Ralph, tell him to call me.
Okay.
I need an ordinance for the remuneration thing.
If we, if, yeah, AJ will have to look in the back.
I don't want to make any promises, other than I'll look and carefully make sure I report back to you, I'm assuming you want a board session.
Yes, yeah, um, and then the other thing that happened over the winter storm that AJ had to do in a hurry. Uh, public works had an issue with people being on the roads at night and, and, you know, it's so cold, and they, their car would get stuck, and then they would leave it, well, then the next day, they couldn't go out and clear the road. So I did have, uh, him, we've done a mandatory curfew, uh, from eight PM to seven AM as in a, during the winter weather emergency. So I would like for him to, uh, put together some type of an ordinance that would allow whoever's sitting in the mayor's chair to, at the request of police fire or rescue, to, or EMS, to, police fire EMS, or the public works department to be able to put a mandatory curfew in as needed for emergency purposes.
Does it have to be an ordinance, isn't that within your powers to do that?
So, um, that's actually a great question. So municipal league actually has on, on their website, they're, this is what they recommend. They recommend that you have in place, um, the authority authorized by ordinance of some kind.
Ah.
Um, because that way, the ordinance can say, I, the mayor, closed the roads from eight, you know, eight PM to seven AM. And if you violate it, it's fifty bucks or a hundred bucks, whatever, and it's a violation or, or whatever. So what we did is, I don't want to go into too much detail, but what we did is, we said that it, um, if you do that and you have an accident where you have to be, you know, taken out of, of it by ambulance, that's probably a COVID violation, because the governor told you not to get too close to it. So you would have to pay the governor's fine for COVID violation.
If we had.
The governor's fine.
Yeah, well, so I think it's like, I can't remember, it was hundreds of lines?
Yeah, we got to practice COVID, because we don't have an ordinance in place. So we need an ordinance in place, that whoever the mayor is can do that and not have to attach it to anything.
That's a lesson learned.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a lesson learned.
That is a lesson learned, so.
We might never need it, but we'll have it in days.
Right, so.
One of the other things probably, just to make sure that we know, because the ordinance says, and the map attached to this ordinance, and of course, it's not in the municipal note. And whether it's actually attached to the ordinance or not, is another story, but I don't know what the list of emergency roads is and what the snow routes are, I don't.
Yeah.
If anybody else does, let me know, but.
Yeah.
No, I don't find anybody with that at all.
Okay, so we need to make sure we're good for that.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, and that was, uh, one of the things that, uh, incident command, uh, they're going to be putting together a map. So incident command can look at that map and know exactly what roads are open and closed, because there was some confusion, they have a lot of new employees. A lot of them don't know the roads yet, and they were putting the, the barricade up at the, at the top of a road, which had a whole bunch of houses on it. So, so that was actually brought up at the second incident command meeting we had, was after this is over, we need to make a map and have a list of streets, and that way, public work employees can say, okay, this one goes farther down the street because of homes in this area or whatever, so. So we're reworking on that, that was, that was brought up in the incident command. So.
Good, that match should improve in Snow Rock as well.
Yes.
I don't know how many times I got asked, where's the Snow Rock?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's where you can drive.
I'm going to close the meeting.
I just think that there's been a change because.